Good morning. I want to call the order of the August 8, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and want to thank all of you who joined with us this morning and welcome. And as we get started, I'll have Flo Evans, our clerk, call the rolls, establish a quorum, and then she'll make a couple of brief announcements and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and get started with the morning's business items. So Flo?
Good morning Supervisors. Serna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli, and you have a quorum.
And I would just note that Supervisor Serna will not be joining us today. He had an urgent family matter to attend to and so he won't be here with us today. Thanks.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, August 11th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Thank you for the announcements and nothing further than Mr. Kennedy, would you please send the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, please?
(Inaudible)
Okay. We have any items to be continued or held over?
I have a few notes here. Okay, so you do have your consent matters, items 1 through 27, and then you also have an off agenda. I will need a motion to take up the matter. It's a received and filed, so we'll only need one motion.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that would have been for Supervisor Donna Natoli, travel to Atlanta, Georgia, July 21st through the 22nd, 2017, to attend the annual conference of the North American Council on Adoptable Children. And then for items 1 through 27, item 16, you are adopting an ordinance adding Chapter 3.33 Title III to the Sacramento County Code relating to establishment of an urban agriculture incentive zone, and you waived reading on this on July 25th. Item 18, you are introducing an ordinance providing a procedure for collecting street and safety lighting charges in CSA 1. You're waiving full reading and continuing to August 22nd for adoption. You're also receiving and filing the engineer's report and written reports for fiscal year 1718 and designating August 22nd for the public hearing and directing staff to provide notice. On August, excuse me, on item 19, I do need a motion to continue this item to August 22nd. This is a report back on flood protection actions for the community of Point Pleasant and to direct staff to proceed with various flood protection efforts for Point Pleasant.
Okay, just I would move to continue that, but I just, okay, and a question I have though, we will be prepared to have that report on 22nd, ready to go. I know we're having a community meeting this week, but, okay, so we'll be...
We should be completely ready for that.
All right, because the rainy season isn't all that far off, even though it's been 100 degrees outside, so, okay, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, I would just note too, if anyone wishes to address the board on any items on the consent calendar or any items not on the agenda, please fill out speaker identification form and we'll call upon you either now or as those items are called. So I'm sure my colleagues and see if there's any items you wish to address, pull up. Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Peters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Like the record reflect, I'm accusing myself on items 2, 13, and 15 due to a potential business conflict.
Okay, so noted. Any other items? Any others? Okay, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and I would just note on item 4, it's been a long time to work. I think the paper may be reflective of the amount of effort and time that's gone into that. It's on the consent calendar on the McClellan Agreement, and I want to just thank our staff. I know it's been, and I know Mr. Kelly and members of his team that are here in the audience as well, and I don't know if you were going to address anything on the consent calendar, but it's been a lot of work and again, it's been a very strong partnership and again, a lot of good things. I think I last heard 17,000 jobs created out at McLean, or more? 20,000, is that close?
Not yet.
Oh yeah, okay. Higher than 17, but hidden for 20, so at any rate, compliments to all that put this together and a lot of work and a lot of negotiating. Mr. Leonard, I know you've been on point with this along with Mr. Gill and others, so, all right, if there's nothing further, I had no one signed to speak on any item on the consent calendar, so last call before I take a motion. All right, see you in London. Motion to approve the consent calendar?
(Inaudible).
Okay, Chair would second it, and then noting recusals on items 2, 13, and 15 by Supervisor Peters.
And also excluding 16 and 19 because you guys voted.
Yes, right. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Supervisor Natoli, before we go to timed items...
You can do some introductions.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Gill.
I wanted to make an introduction of Doug Sloan. He is our new Waste Management Recycling Director. He's been with the county for about seven years, and I'd like to have him come up to the podium, address the board, and share a little bit about himself and the vision he has for the department.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Good morning Doug, congratulations to you.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I'm very humbled to be here today. I'm very appreciative of the confidence that the board, Mr. Gill, Ms. Newton, and Mr. Penrose have had in getting me to this position. I'm very excited about the department. We've got, I've got probably one of the best staffs that are dealing with waste management and recycling issues in the state. I have some people that I believe are industry experts that are helping us out, especially when it comes to some of the sustainability programs we run at the landfill. So I couldn't be more pleased to be up here and in a position where I can lead the department going forward. I've spent most of 30 years in the waste and recycling industry, in a variety of different positions, running different companies, from open landfills to closed landfills to transfer stations, pretty much the whole gamut of what you can do. Had some wonderful experiences. It's been very rewarding. If it's one of those careers that if I could put a plug in for us, people don't think about waste management and recycling in terms of a career long-term, but it's not, it's, we're very innovative in the way we approach things and we spend a lot of time reacting to state legislation that changes our world immensely. Over the next three or four, five years, we're going to be back before this board with some issues because the state is changing the way that we're going to handle food waste and organics, both to get to a 75% diversion rate and then making sure that organic material is not in the landfill. And so that's going to make, that's going to create an opportunity for us to change the program somewhat. So we'll keep you apprised as we go through that process. My priorities for the department are employees, employee development, succession planning, trying to provide the best we can for employees, customer service. We, as you know, we have a very good record within the community of providing customer service to all the residents. And then third would be safety, and we've spent a lot of time and effort improving our safety program and it's dovetails into everything we do. It's not an isolated program anymore, it's dovetailed. So again, just thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with everybody and I can't be more appreciative of the opportunity.
Great. Congratulations Doug. I think it's great and I think you do have a very good department, very innovative, and for people who are looking for a green job, it's interesting, it's in waste management really.
Yes.
So congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Doug, I would offer congratulations and just, and I know that we recently noted 50 years of operating the Kiefer landfill at its current location, and that hasn't been without its challenges over the years, and certainly I think part of us being a good neighbor to our surrounding property owners and residents has certainly been key as far as I've seen it over the last 20-plus years and working through that. And I think, you know, how we manage buffer lands, how we continue to deal with, you know, some of the approaching development that will, you know, bring people and activity closer to the landfills, kind of presents some, you know, some challenges and maybe some opportunities as well, but I would just always keep that in mind that, you know, safety and certainly customer service are important. Part of that customer service is that we have this regional asset and I think how we know we manage day-to-day operations there and certainly handle recycling and some of the things you mentioned, but also our, kind of our fit within that puzzle of properties where we have both rural and some approaching suburban, and we have a, you know, buffer lands with, you know, wetlands and so forth, and a piece of what, you know, obviously you as director and your staff do, but I would just say that's really key in my view. And certainly I've appreciated your predecessors and we'll look forward to working with you on that and many other issues related to waste management and recycling, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, Mr. Gill, any other announcements?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, all right, that takes consent calendar and now we've got some presentations, I believe, so.
Yeah, item 28, recognizing Michael Miller for 30 years of service.
Okay.
Mike Miller, Contract Services. Hi, everybody. I made some notes so I don't babble on and on.
Okay.
Am I allowed to talk for a minute?
(Laughter).
Okay. You know, I started with Sacramento County in 1977. If you do the math, you'll see that's 40 years. There's a 10-year lapse in there. Well, to be completely honest with you, I wasn't a very good employee when I worked for Sacramento County between 1977 and 1990. I got fired.
(Laughter).
You know, I always wanted to come back to Sacramento County. I love Sacramento County. I love working here. I love the people that work here. And so I kept taking tests for every job that I qualified for, and in 1999, I scored pretty high on the ASO test. Then I started going on interviews, and I had, I'd made a change in my life and I was being completely honest and upfront with everybody about everything that had happened in the past. And I told these folks when I would go and interview that I'd been fired previously, and most of them said, "Thank you very much." And I got the letter, "You were among very, many very qualified candidates," but, and, you know, that went on for a while. I went on 30 interviews, and on the 30th interview, I went to the planning...
30 interviews you did?
30 interviews, yeah. I saved all the certifications and all the rejection letters. And on the 30th interview, I went to the planning department. And something clicked with me and the folks there at the planning department, and they called me up and offered me the job, and I was kind of shocked. And I thought, you know, you know, I told them, "You know that I was fired before, right?" And they said, "We talked to our director and he says it's a non-issue. If, you know, if we like you, we're going to bring you back." So that's the reason I wanted to come down here and get this award, not to brag or anything, because, you know, like Doug before me said, I'm humbled to be here. I really, really am. And, you know, I wanted to come down here and put it on record and thank those people for what they did for me, because it changed my life. It really did. And the people that were there in my interview was Kelly Phillips and Dave Jimenez, who's now retired, Anna Rhodes, who's passed away, and the director that said it was a non-issue was Tom Hutchings, and he's retired now. And I also want to thank my family for having faith in me and for always being there for me, especially my wife Cindy Jo, who retired from county service in 2014 with over 32 years, and my daughter Rachel, who's about to get her bachelor's at Sac State, who's been a constant joy in my life. And thank you all very much for allowing me this opportunity to come down here and talk to you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Congratulations on 30 years of service. With a little interruption between there, it sounds like, but nonetheless, your persistence, obviously perseverance paid off and you've been able to work for this organization. So you've worked in Planning Department and General Services, is that correct?
Yes, Planning Department, and then after Planning Department, I transferred to Accounting and Fiscal Services, part of MSA, which is all different now. AFS is gone.
Right.
But then in the 2012 work, they decided that we belonged in purchasing at General Services, and so they took our little section, about five or six of us, and moved us out there.
Okay.
That's where I am today.
Very good.
Five minutes from home. At first I had a resentment. They moved me from downtown where I liked it. My office was right up over there, but I'm good with it now.
Okay.
Now you don't have to pay for parking.
Yeah, no parking, five minutes from home. If I run into traffic, it takes me six minutes.
Works pretty well.
It takes you six, well, good. Well, thank you for your service and certainly for your work and for your wife as well. Obviously, between the two of you, it sounds like you logged 62 years with the county, so, and still going, so, good. Very good. Thanks a lot. Were you going to do any presentation?
(Inaudible).
Mike Morris and, was there any other thing with this?
That was it.
Was there anything else with this item?
That was it.
That was it, okay.
Okay, item 29 is the Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming September 2017 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay. Call Mr. Doss down, Bill.
(Inaudible).
Well, Mr. Doss is obviously a very familiar face to this, members of this board and certainly to the community, those that watch on Channel 14. Again, he's for a number of years, and I'll let him speak in a moment here and tell us how many years, but certainly has been a real, I think, clarion call for folks to not only be aware of their health, but certainly as relates to Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And I appreciate, Bill, that you, again, make the time, come down here and certainly your advocacy and I think work throughout the course of the year, and I think reflecting on importance for people of different walks of life, certainly of, as people mature and age, but whether, you know, men or women to be aware of their health, certainly their surroundings, but also to know that with early detection of cancer, certainly many different types, but prostate cancer being the second only to skin cancer, most frequent cause of, and diagnosis within men, that it's really important for folks as they go through life to do screenings, as certainly working consultation with their physician and those who provide their medical care. But I think to, in testimony you're here in a moment, with early detection and certainly with the change in, you know, in lifestyle potentially, that people can, you know, survive and go on to live healthy, productive lives even after a diagnosis. And that's early detection that's very, very important in that. So on behalf of this board, certainly in our work here and making a call to the community, we want to, again, denote that this September, as we have in recent years, as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Sacramento County, certainly commend folks to, you know, think about the issue and their own health and certainly that of their loved ones and to, again, early, focus on early screening to help detect, but also then to, you know, enjoy a long, productive life. So with that, Bill, I want to thank you for your work and certainly the American Cancer Society for their leadership on this issue, both locally and nationally and internationally. And already we approved this, and so I'm going to let you have another framed copy. I don't know who you shared this with, maybe you have a whole wall filled with the proclamations, but it's a very important and serious matter, and we appreciate your work as an ambassador for, you know, approaching good health and making us think about it this time each year. So, and with that, I'll present this to you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
And allow you to, again, give us a little bit of background, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
(Laughter).
Well, Chair Nolte and Board members, thank you for the opportunity to address the board once again, and since you mentioned I'm a repeat customer, this is my 13th year, and my background information is that you folks have been supportive for over 20 years, every year for a proclamation for prostate cancer, which we really appreciate it. As the Director of the California Prostate Cancer Coalition, we want to thank you for issuing this resolution today. We are pleased that with your resolution, you're joining with the White House, the US Congress, the California Senate and Assembly, and many local government bodies across the country in designating September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Your resolution will help bring awareness about this little-known deadly disease to the attention of our community. Here are some additional interesting facts about prostate cancer. Today in the USA, there are over 3 million men living with a history of prostate cancer, and I'm one of them. In the average American family, the husband has the same risk factor for prostate cancer as the wife has for developing breast cancer. In the USA, 1 in 8 men will develop prostate cancer. Also, 1 in 8 women will develop breast cancer during their lifetime. Men also have the same death rate from prostate cancer as women have from breast cancer. Prostate cancer is a cunning disease because in its early stage, there are no symptoms and there are no self-tests. That is why many researchers are now suggesting every man should have a baseline prostate cancer examination starting at age 40. Men with a family history of prostate cancer, African-American men's, and Vietnam veterans should consider having their baseline prostate cancer examination starting at age 35. As stated in your resolution, the American Cancer Society recommends that every man should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about his own prostate cancer testing. Once again, we want to thank you for your resolution in support of prostate cancer awareness and the opportunity to speak with you once again this morning. Be happy to answer any questions.
(Inaudible).
Pardon me?
We need a picture with you.
Oh, okay.
No question, just a picture.
Yeah, great.
You covered it all. Thanks again, Bill.
Thanks again, I appreciate it. Okay.
(Applause).
Mr. Natoli? On item 2, it's a 4/5 vote. I would like the three of you to recuse yourselves, the three to reconsider and then do another motion to continue.
Okay. All right. We've got a couple of minutes here and we need, we're going to need to revisit an item on the agenda. Item 2 required a 4 fifths vote. All right. We've got a couple of minutes here, and we need, we're going to need to revisit an item on the agenda. Item 2 required a 4/5 vote. And with Member Cerny absent and with the recusal by Member Peters, we're going to need to reconsider that and have to, I guess, hold it over till...
Let's continue it to next meeting.
To next meeting, yeah. Because I know Mr. Powell and Mr. Thomas were here in the audience, and so they probably went away.
We'll notify them. And we'll notify them.
Okay. All right. So we'll need a motion to reconsider. I think you made the motion for the consent counter, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Would you move to?
I moved.
Okay. And Chair would second to reconsider item 2, noting recusal by Member Peters. So we'll need a unanimous vote to reconsider this by the remaining three.
So how do I, I just don't vote? Or I abstain or recuse?
Yeah. Okay. Please vote.
And the motion passes with the record reflecting Susan Peters is recusing. And then I'll need a motion to continue.
Okay. And then I would ask the clerk, I would move to continue this to August 22nd. But would you, somebody needs to get ahold of Mr. Powell.
And I will do that.
Right away, because he was here and I'm sure...
I'll have staff do that right now.
Yeah. Because of inability to have 4/5ths on this, we need to, we needed to continue that. So, all right. So moved, we have a second then to, okay, move the second to continue this to August 22nd. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Supervisor Cerny absent, okay.
And Mr. Cerny is absent, yes.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
So our...
Thank you.
Okay. We still have a few more minutes then?
One more minute.
One minute, okay. Well, yeah, I guess we can start to call the item.
Okay. Item number 30 is the George Hill's Annual Report Presentation.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Mr. Gill, do you want to make some introductory comments on this?
No.
Okay. All right. We're not by the clock yet, not quite 10 o'clock. So Randy can take a moment to open his folder.
Well, since we're waiting till 10, I will make a quick comment. It's been a couple of years since we made this presentation to you. This is back in our rotation and starting February of next year, every year in February, we'll have this report to you. So this is a catch-up for us.
Okay.
And it's 10 o'clock.
Very good. Okay, good. Thank you for filling in, Mr. Gill. Okay. Mr. Rending, good morning, Randy.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Frankly, it's always more pleasurable when I'm standing up here talking about a decrease in overall costs. But unfortunately, that's not the case this year. I'll be spending the next couple of minutes talking about what happened during the 1617 year. But the bottom line unfortunately is the overall program cost went from $13,813,911 to $18,145, excuse me, $18,145,143 in 2017. As you'll see in a moment, a good portion was an increase in the amount of claim payments made as well as litigation costs. There were some, there was a little bit of good news. The number of litigated files that were closed without any type of payment having to be made increased. So we'll, let's look at the charts for a minute. So Exhibit A shows the breakdown of total program costs and percentages by lines of payment. And the purpose of this chart is just to show the three lines of expense that we have, one being George Hill's administration fees, one being attorney's fees and all other costs, and then claim payments. So frankly, if you look at the George Hill's administrative fees, you'll see for the last three years, the percentage of the overall cost has gone down by 1%, 1%, 2% respectively. The attorney's fees and all costs have gone down. Even though the amount of dollars paid has gone up, the percentage of the overall cost has gone down, 42%, 33%, 31%. And then the claim payments have gone up the last three years, 51% of the total, 61% of the total, and 65% of the total. And I'm going to explain the increase in the claim payments in another slide. But due to the nature of all claims that are handled in any given year, there's no way to indicate that any of these trends will necessarily continue as it takes, all it takes is one or two big claims or lawsuits to heavily affect any or all three of these categories. And I should say, these slides are in your packet, so hopefully. Exhibit 2 shows dollars spent per category and the increase or decrease when compared to the previous year's spending. So that first column, 1450, 1415, that shows the total, $10,671,533 was a 3% increase over 1314, which of course, isn't shown on this slide. The most important thing is however, looking at the 1617 category, you'll see that George Hill's fees went down by 13% from the previous year. Attorney's fees and all costs went up 23%. And I'll talk about that in a moment. Claim payments, again, the dollar amount went up, but the percentage was less. And then the total percentage in 201617 of 31% was compared to 29% of the previous year. So the, there were several large, large cases in 1617 that generated that almost, well, $1.1 million in attorney's fees and costs. It required significant prep work by the lawyers to get ready for those cases. There were nine other cases that looked like they might be going to trial as well. So the prep time was significantly more than it's been in the last couple of years. And again, we had two particularly large cases unlike we've had in a number of years before that. The 40% increase in claims payments, again, is due to one gigantic case that we had to make a payment on. There were 10 other cases that totaled approximately, I believe it was $2 million. So the point is 10 cases comprised 83% of the total overall claim payments, which is, again, just looking at 11 cases, having 83% of them represent the entire total, again, goes to the fact of primarily litigation cases being expensive due to either plaintiff's attorney fees exposure, or quite frankly, we just had some bad losses. And again, we take them as we find them, we get them in, and we handle them as best we can, but we can't control, for the most part, what the claims are going to be when they come in. We can control, hopefully, the ultimate outcome, but we certainly can't control what happens in a particular claim as it comes in the door. Exhibit C shows just the assignments to the five defense firms that handle your work. As you'll see, it's kind of bounced over the last three years. We had 62 up to 65, 55 last year. Again, a couple of reasons, I think, for that. We've talked about before, the, the community, I think, at large knows that the county, just like the city, quite frankly, takes tough stands on if we owe them, let's pay them, let's get rid of them right up front. But if we don't, let's go fight. And, you know, we may be either fighting because the amount that somebody wants to settle for is too large, which results in a lawsuit getting filed, or it's just a case of little or no liability. We have got to go fight to either get the case ready to go to trial, or if it ultimately is going to settle because one side sees something they didn't see before, it will result in a settlement. And of course, those, depending on the amount we bring to you for, for approval.
I have a question before you leave that slide.
Sure.
So this list of attorneys, is that your choice, or does county council choose those law firms and the assignment of said lawsuit to those firms?
Right. We have always, it's in the contract, it's been up to George Hill's to assign those. There are times, however, that I have consulted with Robin and her predecessors.
Is the list approved by county council in advance?
There's nothing formally approved that I'm aware of, Supervisor.
Okay.
Yeah. I know we've gone through in the past several of these, we had other firms that are no longer on this list for a variety of reasons. A number of years ago, we did a couple of RFPs at the request of county council and the board to look at perhaps some other firms that were out there. Two of these firms were additions as a result of that RFP. And again, several firms have come off for a variety of reasons. So Exhibit D, again, shows those same five firms and shows what they were paid in the last three years. Again, I mentioned a bump in the legal fees of almost $1 million. And again, as I said, we just had two cases, big, big cases that went to trial. And the amount of time getting ready to prep those was phenomenal because of the potential exposure of those cases. There was also an attorney fee increase during the last fiscal year, which also attributed to the increase in legal fees. E, as I referred to earlier, there is some good news in that we jumped our rate of non-payment, if you will, cases that didn't require any type of settlement, from 50% last year to 57%, excuse me, two years ago, 57% this last year. And the reason for no payment can be either the case was dismissed by the court, we got out on a motion for summary judgment, plaintiffs decided not to pursue the case, so there are a variety of reasons for that. But the good news is, we always try, we kind of have a benchmark for 60% every year, and it's difficult to project and say that that's a number that we can hit every year. Because again, handling claims is so volatile and individual things happen on each one, you just can't predict with any kind of certainty what that closing ratio can be. But we strive for 60%. We came close in this last year. I think it's important to note because we, you know, we come to you many times for money, more than I'm sure you'd like us to come to you and more than we'd like to come to you, quite frankly. But again, 50% of the time in litigated cases, we're not paying anything to resolve cases other than to have to pay our lawyers. Exhibit F shows lawsuits by department. The sheriff's department had the largest percentage. They accounted for 40% as compared to 42% the previous year. And again, you, there's no real change, no real trend in what we're seeing from the sheriff's department. You see excessive forces, you see civil rights cases. There's no real change or trend in terms of the types that we're seeing. I just went back and looked because that number, 46%, is so large. And George Hill's does a large amount of work for a large number of cities and counties in the state. And in looking where all of our clients, those that have law enforcement, either a jail or just street patrols, at least in most of all of our clients, at least 50% are of the new lawsuits every year come from law enforcement. It's just, that's the way it is. And, you know, as we all know, law enforcement has gotten a bad reputation over the years. And people see that, they read about it, and they think they're an easy target. And so we get a lot of frivolous lawsuits, many of which fall into that 50% or 57% when we close them without any payment. But law enforcement's an easy target, unfortunately. So we work with them, we talk to them, we have a lot of interaction with them. You know, early on, when we're trying to look at the case and decide whether it's something we should pursue, trying to defend, they are certainly involved, as are all other departments, when we're looking at, should we settle the case, should we not settle the case, having those discussions so we can all hopefully be on the same page. It doesn't always mean we are in terms of what we should do, but we try certainly to involve everybody in that process.
Susan, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I think, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but in the staff report, you break out alleged harassment, discrimination, and civil rights claims. And I wonder if you are in a position to make a judgment about, are most of those avoidable? I mean, is there something the county could do through, I don't know, education or some other way to reduce the number of claims in that area?
Yes and no.
Oh, thanks.
So...
There you have it.
A good example, let me give you a good example of yes. For a number of years, we would have rear-end law, rear-end auto accidents to where inevitably, it was a sheriff's vehicle, they were looking down at their computer, look up, too late, rear end. You know, when we started...
X-Team while driving.
Yeah. And as you recall, a number of years ago, we had to include a corrective action memo with, you know, all the cases that we brought to either David or your board indicating what could be done to try and prevent those. The sheriff's department in that case did put in a new operations order in terms of operating their computers when in their car. We rarely ever see a rear-end case, you know, as a result of that, looking down at their computers. There are certainly some cases in terms of what happens in a jail or either out in the street where deputies might become a little too aggressive in terms of what they do, not so much when we're talking about a shooting, but when they're trying to take somebody down, force escalates. There's certainly cases, Supervisor, that probably wasn't warranted. And when there's an IA investigation or other type of investigation, it's pointed out. And I think, I can't tell you within the department what they do necessarily in terms of discipline. But overall, from my read anyway, in terms of that 46%, I don't see a lot to where...
And I'm looking at the 36% in the staff report that say alleged harassment, discrimination, civil rights claim. So I assume that is across all departments?
It is. Yeah, it is. And everybody makes mistakes, so it does happen from time to time. But I would say 75% of the time, and again, without giving it more thought and looking at some more data, I'd say 75% of the time, we did what either we should have done, what was in training manuals, whatever. And unfortunately, a lot of those, again, are either frivolous or not something that we're end up, going to end up paying for. And we can't prevent anybody from filing suit, whether, of course, there's any merit or not.
So those are cases that have, where the county's been sued, but they didn't necessarily prevail?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's that 57%.
It wasn't there to me. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's that 57%.
I have a follow-on question. Sure. A little bit of vain, but relates to that corrective action memo, and you mentioned it, Randy, a moment ago, on items that would come forward. And the threshold is for any settlement that's $20,000 or more. So the corrective action memos, are they beyond attaching to the actual claim itself? I guess maybe I looked into NAV. Is there somebody in the executive office that then keeps, tracks those to, you know, it's one thing just to put a memo, but then who sees to it that is followed through on and that there's not some repetitive actions that I, obviously, our, you know, our risk manager and our, you know, party that indemnifies us and looks at these claims. But I guess I'm curious, what's the, what's the touch back, back to the county?
So once the corrective action memos come in, the deputies are the ones that work with the departments to make sure that what's been outlined is being followed. And one of the things that David Villanueva and David Devine have started doing is having monthly meetings with departments on type of claims that we're seeing and what needs to be done to...
Is county council involved in those, too?
Yes. County councils, too. So it's a committee, and we are further looking at formalizing where the county exec, my position gets more of a formal briefing on it. And if you will, the top three departments that are on this list will come in and we'll go through what kind of claims, what are they doing to avoid it, and what changes we need to make. We haven't taken that step, but that's the next evolution that we want to do.
Well, and I think to the last point, Randy responded to for Ms. Peters, that relative to harassment claims, that, you know, both in the workplace, but certainly by those who may have interactions with the county, whether they be, you know, valid, substantiated or not, I think those are types of things, particularly if they're substantiated, that, you know, looking at that, because it's one thing if you have an individual employee, but if there's a particular, you know, culture attached to that, wherever that may be, any department and so forth, those are things that I think, to your point about this review, whether it's David Villanueva or David Devine, you look at those things because if that's the exposure that we have out there, then, you know, training can correct some of that sometimes as an individual employee or, or employees, but, and/or just who they're interacting with and maybe some difficult populations at times or difficult interactions. But, so there is some ongoing review, and I think that's important. I think certainly council and certainly our risk manager, but also our top county staff so that, to assure that we don't keep making those potential mistakes again, without at least giving some effort to making sure that beyond the individual and/or individuals that there's, you know, if there's a, you know, a departmental issue, then that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, we're looking for trends, as, as you can imagine. And if we find a trend that repeats, then what kind of training needs to be done? The example that was used about having some different SOPs put in place.
Right. On the rear enders.
Rear enders. I mean, all that, we're looking at. And you can imagine, I mean, the sensitivity is pretty high on this. It's one of those things that does kind of ebb and flow, and we've got to keep an eye on it and to make sure that we're doing everything we can as an organization to mitigate the risk.
Okay. And then on this pie chart, what's non-jurisdictional? What is that?
So many times, people will sue the county when in fact, the accident, even though it's in Sacramento County, it happened in the city of Sacramento. So we shouldn't be a party to the lawsuit. So unfortunately, again, if they name the city and the county, it happened in the city, county doesn't have jurisdiction. What we try and do is our adjuster, who's handling the individual case, will call up the lawyer that filed the lawsuit and said, hey, you got the wrong folks here. County has, doesn't own, maintain, control... own, maintain, control, if in fact it's a road case. And hopefully, we then tell them, we'll try and get a declaration from the appropriate department saying county doesn't own, maintain, control. We provide that declaration to the lawyers, they'll either then dismiss us with prejudice, meaning they can bring us back in if it turns out that we were wrong, and in fact, we did have jurisdiction, but it's just to show that, again, there are those cases that they wrongly sue us, it does cost us money when we have to defend them, but we try and handle those in-house and not have to hire a lawyer to do that for us.
Okay. One last point, then, Randy, this was a little different format than I recall from years back, that it certainly shows, you know, claim numbers, which, you know, may or may not have some confidentiality attached to them, but we used to have, besides this pie chart, we could see by departments. There was a graph chart, if I recall correctly, some time ago, that showed, actually department by department, where those claims were paid out, because you have, this red segment of your pie shows, you know, miscellaneous three or less claims, but, you know, I guess my curiosity says to me that, you know, where else, and to have that charted out, it's not to, you know, have some graphic that shows this...
Well, you had a graphic at the beginning that showed the departments.
All of them?
Well, not departments, but what agency they sit in, I think. Wasn't that your first exhibit?
I can certainly, going forward, rather than make it this restrictional in terms of just showing either the, you know, three or more has its own, as opposed to showing each individual, that's easy to do.
Yeah. Yeah, again, it just would be helpful, because I mean, I don't know if, you know, what other departments, there's a lot of departments in the county, so, is in the red, is that airports, is it, you know, ag commissioner, is it...
Right.
Maybe there's zeros on all of those, and so I don't want to presume, it's just, I think, without, again, having to get into detail of each case, to have a little more idea what's in that miscellaneous...
Sure.
So, okay. Thanks.
All right. Exhibit G, I think Supervisor Peters, this, you were referring to the 36%. The 36% is other personal injury cases, again, which are the harassment, discrimination, ones that don't involve an actual physical injury. Those can come from any department. It's not just sheriff, it's not, you know, anybody that is guilty of discrimination, or some other event that causes personal injury, emotional distress, that sort of thing, that falls into this 36%, where the other bodily injury, the 35%, can be trip and falls, can be road cases, can be sheriff's department, where an allegation of excessive force and somebody's hurt. So that's how these break out, similar that we've done in the past, and again, there is a non-jurisdictional, because that was the allegation, but we did get out of those cases.
Thanks.
So, okay. And Exhibit H is just showing, what, 13 years, I guess, of claims, just kind of showing a trend, what's happened over the last 13 years.
Need to change the slide, Randy, if you could.
I'm sorry?
You've got Exhibit F up there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Again, two years ago, 624, 627, there were a couple of watermarks, 512, 565, you know, this 667 may represent that a lot of those could develop into lawsuits. That's, what, 120-some, 22 more, I guess, in the previous year? So, that, on one hand, could affect what happens next year, in terms of an increase in claim payments or litigation costs, but again, if they're small claims, then that isn't necessarily going to have a relationship, in terms of more claims means higher costs, that doesn't mean that at all, so. That's it, and then I have included, I was in a board session a number of months ago, and I believe it was Supervisor Peters that asked for the old breakout in terms of showing what each of the defense council were doing in terms of settling and that sort of thing, and it's at the back of your packet here, so.
I had one further question, and it came up, because you did tell us who these other firms were. Do we, as the county, ever hire someone to defend us who has sued us in the past?
To perform legal services?
Yeah. I don't know.
Not to my knowledge.
I realize you guys kind of divvy up in defense and prosecution, but...
Yeah, I mean, all these firms are typically 90%, if not more, strictly handling defense work, as opposed to the people that would sue us, be plaintiffs' lawyers.
But they don't have both sides of the house in one firm?
There may be a law firm, big enough, that would have some plaintiff's lawyers in their firm, but they're not the ones that are handling the defense, they would be in a different unit. Portis Scott, for example, I mean, they're a large, large firm, and there's some lawyers that get plaintiff's cases, and they don't do the county's defense work, they've never been involved in the Sac County case, so it'd be a conflict, so, no.
Well, I thank you for providing this. All we ever hear is the bad stuff in closed session. We don't get to hear that you actually made a lot of progress, and we don't see most of the suits, so it, for me, it really helps.
Great, thank you. Any more questions?
Any other questions? No, it's good. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
So we'll be back on February 18, another report.
All right. Okay, so receiving file. All right. We're now at 10:23, so we can call the 10:15 item.
Okay, item 31 is the extension of the proclamation of local state of emergency due to extreme winter storms of January and February 2017, and storm recovery update.
Before you do that, I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Page, before you leave the chambers, Steve? Just wanted to say, thank you for your service to the county as well, so I understand you left county service, but thank you so much for your good work over the years, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Take care. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor, I just said that, because I wanted to...
Come on down, Randy. Steve thought he was going to get out of here quietly, I know he doesn't like all the attention, but come on down.
You know, I've worked with Steve for 20-plus years, and frankly, what he's done to help George Hills, the information he's provided, the camaraderie, the team approach that we've had, we couldn't have done what we've done without him. So I greatly appreciate it, I can't say any more than tremendous amount of thanks.
Wish you well in retirement, Steve. Thanks. Good. Thanks, Randy. Okay. Now, down to the other, Steve, you can tell me.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Steve, you can tell me from Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services, and I just have a quick update on the storms that we had in January, February of this year. Can I figure out how to work this? Is it this here?
Is this right?
Thank you. Okay, just for a quick update, we had two storms, they separated the storms in January, so we had two. One was FEMA 4301, and the second one was 4305. The periods was January 3 through the 12th, and the declaration that this board made was on February 14th. For the second one, the dates were January 18 through the 23rd, and the county declared on March 16th. So for the January storms, the initial damage estimates came in at about 6986464, that was countywide, and then for the Sacramento County departments, it was $3,425,084. The initial damage estimates for the second storm of January, countywide, was $745,861, and the Sacramento County Department's share of that was $945,769. Continuing the January storm, we submitted a request for public assistance to Cal OES and FEMA, that was submitted on the 3rd of April. They held a briefing for the county and all of the special districts within the county. At that meeting, all the county departments and the reclamation districts were told that they have to have a list of projects developed, and they had 60 days in which to return those to Cal OES and FEMA. The list of projects basically is an itemization of all the damages that they have, and a plan to either restore those infrastructures to their original condition, or replace them. So, the first storm, 4301, the county's list of project submission was $1.3 million, and for the second storm in January, 4305, the submission was $372,666. Those numbers are significantly different than the IDEs that were initially presented, primarily because we, I say the county, and also the reclamation districts, had to determine what that cost would be, so they had to get people out to, contractors out to give them estimates. Some of the areas that were still too damaged to get estimates on, so, once that was done, the, a more accurate number was developed from there. The county IDE, here's some of the major differences between the IDE and what was actually submitted. $1.3 million from DOT was redirected to the FHWA projects, was the highway administration, and then $1.2 million was RD costs that were included into our county DWR costs, so that had to be separated. So those were the two major ones, there was, the rest of them were primarily just differences in what they determined what the actual cost was and what their estimates were. We did a project application form to Cal OES, number 126, that was submitted, along with the federal assurance for assistance, and then the applicant agent, the agents for the county, or myself, Mary Jo Flynn from the OES office, and Fred Salimi from finance. So for the February storms, 4308 is the designated number for it, the incident period was February 1 through the 23rd, the county declared on April 1, 2017, and then there was a request for public assistance, that was submitted to FEMA on April 13, 2017, and they held, again, another briefing to advise all the submittals to make sure that they followed the directions of the FEMA and Cal OES guidances.
Steve, I need to ask you, though, so, I'm trying not to read ahead here too much, so, you did January, you submitted them, so what next? Waiting for the check? Are we waiting for, you know, again, we're approaching mid-August, still sorting through this, so what happens?
It's both of what you just said. Right now, there are already checks coming in, but there's also a lot of discussions and negotiations with FEMA and Cal OES as to what the actual costs were, and what is eligible for reimbursement. So there's still some negotiation going on between the county departments and those outside the county, by their agents, to determine what their reimbursable costs will be.
So, for example, you said FHWA for Department Transportation, $1.3 million, has a check been received for those projects?
I believe the dam, the debris removal has been received.
What about pavement repair?
That, I don't, I don't think they've received any checks on that yet. Some of those projects have been approved, so they're pending reimbursement, some are still in negotiations.
Okay. I guess for another update, then, maybe from Department Transportation, wherever those are, so, wherever those damages occurred, you know, in the unincorporated area of the county, if we're getting reimbursement to make sure, for example, I'm just going to use New Hope Road, which was underwater...
Right.
Even in May, you know, they've done some pothole patching and so forth, but I'm curious, you know, are they going to get in there and do base repair? I mean, the road's travelable, but, and likewise, other areas, and, you know, neighborhoods and so forth, what's the schedule, have to check, if it's been approved, then is it on the list to get repaired before the next rainy season?
For that, we would have to check with DOT to find out.
Well, I'm just saying, that to me is key, though, it goes to, you know, getting things back in repair, and if not, anything we need to know. I mean, it wasn't, bridges washed out, there was some abutment, work need to be done in the Wilton Bridge, for example, again, I'm just speaking in the areas in the district that I'm aware of, but I know there's all, you know, all five districts, I mean, had some level of impact, to a greater or lesser extent, so I guess, I'm curious, this is all well and fine for claiming, you know, it's getting to dollars, it's the status of that, but I guess, I want to know, you know, what about the actual repairs? And if the check is in the mail, and we know it's approved, then has that been built into the list, or are we gonna, gonna go into the season without those repairs being done? We have the money in the bank, and we'll do it next spring? Well, that may, you know, that may present some other difficulties, so I guess I would like to know, I think it's an important point, so.
I know I can't speak specifically, but I do know the DOT has been out there doing a lot of the repairs. I know New Hope is, that you mentioned, is one that was delayed because it was underwater, and so I don't think they've done very much for New Hope, but in a lot of the other areas they have, but I could find out and...
Okay, well, it just seems, again, so if it's getting done, I mean, I trust that they're going to do it, I just, it's just a matter of, you know, if we're not waiting for the check, then we can do it, if we know they've been approved, and so it's kind of those status, somebody that has that list must be easily to, easy to pull up, I would think, so, if it's all under a FEMA header, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Going back to the February storm, we submitted the public assistance request, that was submitted on the 13th of April, they held their briefing, the county attended, as well as some of the RDs, and we were advised to follow the guidances, which were the same as January storm, so there was no real changes from that. The list of projects were requested, they have 60 days in which to get the list of projects, and that date is August 14th, so we still don't know what the difference between the IDEs, the initial damage estimates, and the list of projects costs are, but we'll know that soon. The initial damage estimates for the February storms, countywide, was $18,572 and $199. Sacramento County's was $1,569,599. The project application form, the Form 126 was submitted, as well as the assurance for federal assistance, and the designated application agents were the same, Mary Jo, myself, and Fred Salimi. And this just kind of highlights some of the major issues that we had in the storms in January. We had the Point Pleasant required boat operations for rescues to assist people from their flooded homes. We also had power outages due to the windstorms and the floodwaters that left homes without power. A few of the homes in the Point Pleasant areas without water, without power for a longer period of time, due to some safety concerns from smud and fire. The New Hope Road, as we mentioned, was underwater for an extended period of time, and so the damages were delayed in terms of them identifying what they were actually caused by the flooding. And in February, we had to establish some shelters there because of the Orville. First, we established it for the busload of students coming back from a sporting event from the Butte County, so we sheltered them for the February storms, but then later, that transitioned into a shelter for the Orville issue. So, we had three shelters up, one of them was in Citrus Heights, one of them was in Elk Grove, and then finally, we opened up Cal Expo with the state, and we were able to move our operations from the other two shelters into the Cal Expo shelter. We also had the train derailment that occurred on February 10 in the Point Pleasant area. Fortunately, there was no hazmat, so it contained food products, so there was no big issue. They just, I think, removed the final part, car, train, I think it was about two weeks ago. And then on the 11th, they had the RCCC evacuation, the water got right up to the door, it was about a foot from the doors, before we were able to have them bring inmates back, the water started to recede, I think it was just about a foot from the front door. As you know, the agriculture is under a separate category for FEMA, so the commissioner, agriculture is working on that. And then the Orville Dam, as I explained, they had some costs for the sheltering, but also fire, EMS and OES also had some, for care of the homeless, for care of some of the people that were evacuated from the Orville area, and for some of the patients that were transferred from the medical care facilities that were up there.
Steve, a question on that slide, so, the Agriculture Commissioner, is there a separate report, not just projected losses, but also reimbursements? Is there some...
Julie should have some reports. I know I talked to her in the past, she said there's a long delay in doing the livestock and agricultural reports, because some of the repercussions from the storm can't be calculated until later with crops. So I would guess, I haven't talked to her recently, but I would guess that she probably has some of those numbers now.
Okay, I guess it would be helpful, again, not necessarily for today's presentation, but there's different pockets of information, and, you know, you're kind of the umbrella for making sure that we get the, you know, reimbursement claims in there, that we do it properly, and, you know, and working with OES. I think it's important, from the standpoint of the public record and understanding, certainly by this board, but by anybody else to be interested, if it's a kind of just information out there, even if it's not collected yet, okay, but at some point in time, that needs to be assimilated. That's my, I mean, my take on this, is that you ought to have it together, so if there was XYZ and road damage, here's what, the RDs, you know, here's got repaired, so people can legitimately say that FEMA did come through, you know, maybe, you know, and if they didn't, you know, again, it's just spotty information, I guess, and it's there, and we're doing the work, I'm not going to get caught up in paperwork, but I just think that there ought to be a little more meat to, to the skeleton here, so.
Until all the storm-related damage and costs were incurred from the January, February storms, or reported FEMA and Cal OES, the county executive or his designate will continue to request for the 30-day approvals, for the extension of the proclamation of the local state of emergency. I'm anticipating that we'll be able to request that the proclamations no longer be extended sometime in September, once the February storm... sometime in September, once the February storm reports are in for their final costs. So, the recommendation from my office is that we adopt the resolution approving a 30-day extension to the January storm proclamation and adopt the resolution of a 30-day extension for the proclamation for the February storm as well. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Move the item.
Move a second, then, to approve the extensions of the resolutions regarding the local state of emergency for the January, February storms. If nothing further, please vote.
I do have...
Unanimous vote with those members present. Just one second, sorry.
Good, Steve.
Oh, I do have a very preliminary number from the RDs. They're reporting about $2.3 million worth of damage that they've submitted to Cal OES and FEMA at this point. That's not all the RDs, it's about 75% of them that have reported back to me.
Does that include RD 800? I know I've had some conversations.
800 was included in that.
So, their estimates actually were significantly lower than what the...
Well, I think, I think it was a combination of that and the negotiations brought that number down.
Okay. Okay, thanks. All right, thanks for your work, Steve. I know this is, you know, kind of preoccupies a lot of your time, so appreciate it. Okay. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else to address the board? I know someone had called in about an off-agenda item, but I don't see anybody here, so. Okay, that takes care of the morning's, except for appointments, I guess, if you want to.
We do have item 32. You are acting as the Board of Supervisors and Sacramento Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. I need a motion to continue this to August 22nd.
Tell them.
Can you move a second and continue item 32 to August 22nd? Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay.
That concludes our morning.
Your ticket nominations? If you were ready?
You can do that.
What number is it?
37.
37.
7, yeah, 37.
Position myself to the microphone.
Okay. Item 37. You are continuing to September 12th the Children's Coalition, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, and the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. You're continuing to September 26th the Consumers Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, first, we have the Adult and Aging Commission, Mr. Natoli.
Okay. I understand that the request to continue this to September 12th, 2017.
Okay. And then we have the Assessment Appeals Board, Mr. Natoli.
Yes, I understand that an interview's been conducted and that the chief's recommending Carlos Anguiano. And to continue the remainder until September 12th.
Okay. Then we have the first five Sacramento Commission. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, just a minute.
Okay.
I'll turn the page.
Okay.
There's five. Okay, chiefs are recommending that we nominate, reappoint the incumbents, Scott Moke, David Gordon, Beth Hassett, and Stephen Wertz, and also then, and Dr. Terry Jones, excuse me, and then, I guess it's all incumbents, and Dr. Lee Turner Johnson, so all of those be appointed.
Okay, and that concludes that. And then Sacramento County Mental Health Board, would you like to give...
Yes. District 1 wishes to continue to September 12th.
Okay. And Supervisor Frost?
Continue to September 12th.
Okay. Next is the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Supervisor Frost?
I would like to waive and appoint Ronald Seaman, please.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes that. Next would be our Sacramento County Youth Commission.
District 1 wishes to continue to September 12th.
Okay. Ms. Peters?
Continue to August 22nd.
Okay. And then Ms. Frost?
And I would like to nominate Arthri Sridhar.
Okay.
Hope I said that right.
And then Mr. Natoli?
Yes, we still have an interview pending for one of the applicants, but we'd like to nominate Graham Johnson.
Okay. Next would be the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission.
District 1 is recommending reappointment of Jason Silva.
Okay. And then Ms. Peters?
I'd like to nominate William Mishmail and request the process be waived.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
District 5 nominate Marie Meritz incumbent.
Okay. And then our last and final would be the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to September 12th.
And Mr. Natoli?
Likewise.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Do you have a closed session, Mr. Gill?
Yes, we do. Two items.
Okay, so...
Are we going to go now, or wait till 12?
We can do it now.
Okay, so. Do a closed session and then return here for 2 o'clock.